Chair opens the September 6, 2023, meeting at the Mashpee Planning Board here at Town Hall in the Wacoite Room 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. Time is 7:00 PM. I welcome everyone here tonight for being broadcast live on Channel 8. It's now Channel 8, not 18, and streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website at www.mashppa.gov backslash channel dash 8. We're being videoed and recorded tonight. Pledge of Allegiance, please stand if you're able.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have our minutes of the meeting on August 16, 2023. Does anybody have any edits or changes?
Yep, I would just, Chrissy, under Cape Cod Commission, instead of no meeting, no report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
Anything else?
Nothing else, I had moved to approve as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, okay. Okay, for the audience and for anybody's benefit who wants to hear it, we're having the ground rules for public hearing tonight, public comment tonight. We have three public hearings. The first one is about the articles, the Warren articles, that we're looking to put on the town meeting. And the second and third are Willow Bend matters. We won't be having any public comment on Willow Bend tonight because the proponent has asked for a continuance until October 18, so I won't entertain any comment unless it's general information but not germane, not specific to their two applicants, two applications. And after we cover all the three hearings, public hearings, we'll go to new, before we go to new business, you can have, you can have public comment on anything else. Okay, so let's start with public hearing, we're not quite at 7:10, so let's go to something else. We don't have our engineer here tonight?
No.
No.
But I can provide my update on housing production plan if you'd like.
Okay, fine.
I did bring flyers with me tonight. Our first workshop for the housing production plan is scheduled in person at the Mashpee Public Library on September 19, starting at 6:30 PM. We'll be joined by our consultants from Barrett Planning Group, members of the Affordable Housing Committee. Would urge all Planning Board members to participate, and if you're unable to be in person on September 19, we are holding a subsequent workshop virtually on Zoom. All of the meeting information for both the in-person workshop as well as the virtual workshop are posted now on the Planning Department's webpage. If you were to enter the Planning Department page, you'd find the tabs on the left, they're blue tabs, and click the Community Education and Engagement tab, you will find the Housing Production Plan page. The Zoom links are included, the flyers, our press release, and all information and updates relative to the development of the housing production plan can be found there. So please take a flyer, share the link with your friends. The workshop, the virtual workshop will mirror identically the workshop that we're holding in person. We're really seeking to collect the same information. For board members, we'd love to see it twice, especially, you know, to help facilitate or to bring your expertise, that's totally fine, but we really want to make sure that everyone participates. So again, September 19 for the in-person workshop at the library, September 21 virtually, starting at 5:30, all the information on the Planning Department's webpage. Shortly after the completion of those workshops, we'll be issuing a survey to support the update of the housing production plan that was reviewed and finalized with the Affordable Housing Committee last night. Our second workshops will be held towards the end of October, and the dates are being confirmed, so I'll report back to you on our second workshop at your next meeting.
Okay. Anything on, excuse me, Harbor Management Planning Committee update?
We actually didn't have a meeting last month, so I have no new updates. We did, and we did meet with the Historical Commission, I'm not sure if I have reported back to you on that, but we met with the Historical Commission and are going to begin working with the Historical Commission, specifically Rosemary Burns Love, on the deed and title research that may be required to regain public access to the water. Dale, anything from you on that? That's pretty much the scope of my update.
Yep, no, we didn't have a full enough agenda to warrant a meeting, so.
Yeah, I think we'll be back next month.
Okay, we still have a little time. Cape Cod Commission, Mary?
No report.
Community Preservation?
Our public hearing on the community preservation program is September 14 at Town Hall at 6:30. I hope you all can attend. Community preservation money can be used for affordable housing, historic preservation, recreation, and open space. So there'll be time for the public to comment on the priorities for these limited funds in our community.
Thank you. Nothing at design review, no meeting, plan review?
Design review did not meet.
No meeting? Evan, I mean Dale?
EOC, yep, there was a meeting on the 30th, and they did have a guest speaker who gave a good presentation from, from the report I got from David. I was actually unable to make it. And David and I are working on getting the presentation in the PDF form, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Historic District?
No meeting.
Okay.
So Dale, can you share that PDF with us?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, that'd be great.
And what is it going to be about?
I'll have to update you on that.
It was the, it was the funding for the restoration of the rivers, right? I think, I mean, it's a, it's from NOAA, they're applying to NOAA, and there's a consultant that's going to apply to, you know, working for the Town of Mashpee with the tribe to apply for major funds to restore the Quashton River, this Intuit River, the Mashpee River. And if we get the money, it's going to be really great for the town.
Talking millions?
I, I'm sure it's millions, they're going for the whole, the whole budget.
Okay, sounds great.
Yeah, because it's kind of through your department too, right?
Yes, from the Natural Resources Department, Historical Preservation Department, cleaning up those rivers, help clean up the bay.
So is it two rivers or three?
Pretty sure it's two rivers.
It's two, Quashton and Mashpee?
I want to, I had to double check, I'm, I'm thinking, I thought it was Mashpee and Santuit.
Okay, all right. Sorry, I keep throwing them all in there, you know?
Okay, the time has arrived at 7:10 for our first open public hearing. Mashpee Planning Board Public Hearing Notice. Pursuant to Mashpee General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, September 6, 2023, at 7:10 PM from the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, in the Wacoite Meeting Room to review the following zoning articles proposed for action at the October 16, 2023, meeting. We do have a couple people in the audience, so the way we'll do it is, I'll read just the short version of what the warrant is, and then I'm going to have comment from the board, and then comment from anybody, public comment. So we won't, we won't vote to recommend or not recommend until we come back to all of them. The warrant number two is the floodplain article. Should I read this, this, what it's about, this short version?
I think that would be wise for anyone watching at home.
Okay, yes. This article would require the new construction or redevelopment of home structures in the floodplain zone overlay district. Utilize more flood-safe construction methods by prohibiting the use of fill material to raise the first floor elevation of a structure to above base ground, base flood levels. This article would require the use of solid wall foundations with flood vents or pilings for new construction or redevelopment. This bylaw further proposes to require the installation of innovative alternative septic systems as required by Board of Health regulation. This bylaw does not propose to remove the rights of any property owner to build or rebuild on their property, however seeks to encourage more flood-safe and environmentally sensitive construction methods. Comment from the board?
I just have a problem with this, it's like saying, here's the law, but we're not forcing anybody to do this, the way it was to me. This bylaw does not prohibit the removal of rights of any property owner to build or rebuild on, on their property, however seeking to.
Okay, so you're not, just because you're building flood vents and you're building on pilings, you're now not building on dirt, you know, as, as we are now? So you can still build, nobody's.
But you have to build on the pond.
Or flood.
Yeah, Dennis, the purpose of the explanation is that.
I was confused with that, I was like.
Prior iterations of this article were subject to a campaign of misinformation, whereas it was asserted that a similar article would strip property owners of their development rights. So for the purposes of clarity, we felt it was important to make sure that that specific language was contained in the explanation of the article.
Yeah.
Somebody asked me about this, I could explain, wait a minute, okay.
This helps with FEMA insurance for the coast people.
Well, I agree with 100%.
Okay, so we'll, any public comment? Does anybody have anything to say about that? Yea or nay? No public comment. Moving on to warrant article three.
Are we going to vote?
We're going to vote.
All, after we read them all?
Yeah, yeah, I think so, just get the whole thing. Warrant three. To see if the town will vote to amend section 174 dot dash dot 45 dot four, accessory apartment section subsection A of the Mashpee zoning bylaw. This bylaw would allow property owners who construct accessory apartments to live in their accessory apartment and rent their principal dwelling to tenants. Current bylaw language restricts a property owner from residing in the accessory apartment while renting their principal dwelling. So what it, it doesn't say is you can't rent both your principal dwelling and your accessory dwelling at the same time. One or the other. Public comment from the board?
No, I agree with.
Comment from the public? No comment. Warrant four. To see if the town will vote to amend section 174 dash dot 45 dot four, accessory apartment subsection C of the Mashpee zoning bylaw. This article clarifies that the allowed size of an accessory apartment to within a defined range. Currently, the bylaw allows accessory apartments to be not less than 350 square feet and may not exceed 40% of the gross floor area of any principal dwelling. The 40% calculation has proven to be confusing, a confusing regulatory mechanism to control size, and thus, this article would place a firm minimum size and maximum size of an accessory apartment to be not less than 450 square feet and not more than 900 square feet.
Madam Chair, just for the purposes of clarity, you're operating from a slightly older draft, the executed warrant contains, it's not 450, 350 to 900.
You're right, 350. It trunked the size, the minimum to, minimum of 350, max to 900. Any comment from the board?
So we're just taking the math?
Yes.
We're just taking the math out of this for everybody?
No, just the 450, we'll turn that to 350.
It's 350, right.
I'm saying like, so there's no.
There's no ratio of 40%.
You don't have to figure anything out, yeah. Actually, they wanted, some people, like, I think Ron Bonvey wanted to go to 320 because he's seen places, that I've seen that are unbelievable, where the bed comes down from the ceiling and the partitions split so you can see your workspace and your closets there, and when you don't need your workspace or closet, you just roll them back together again. It's the new way to live.
And the 40% ratio calculation made a heck of a lot more sense when we didn't allow detached accessory apartments. When it was required to be attached to your home, it made a heck of a lot more sense to regulate using that as a mechanism, but since we now allow separate detached units, it really is not functional.
I get it. Okay.
Let me go to the newer version, I thought I had it.
Yeah.
To see if the town will vote to amend section 174 dot 45 dot four, accessory apartment subsection one, I'm not sure it's one, of the Mashpee zoning bylaw. This article would require that any accessory apartment that is created be rented year-round. Current bylaw states that accessory apartments may be rented, may be rented. This article would require that they be rented. Additionally, the current rental restriction prohibits rentals of accessory apartments of less than 30 days. This would require property owners with accessory apartments to rent either the principal dwelling or the accessory apartment for a period of not less than 12 months to be more consistent with the purpose and intent of this section. Any comment by the board?
Okay, so what if somebody wants to put their parents in their accessory?
Still a tenant.
You can, but you have, they have.
They're not paying rent, though.
Not to pay rent?
Still a tenant, I would suggest, for the purposes of being compliant, have your parents sign a lease for $0 per month. I'm doing the same with my mother, Hack does the same thing.
Good, good point.
So what, so let me see this right, so what about, so if somebody's renting out their primary, their main dwelling, it has to be for a year or two?
Yes.
Since you're bound, since you've constructed an accessory apartment bound by the terms of this section, if you're going to be renting one or the other, you would have to comport with the terms of this section, so yes.
Mm-hmm.
I have a problem then.
You have a problem with that?
Yeah, I knew two people that used to go to Woods Hole, and they have, you know, professors, and they come in there for 30 days, 60 days, and they used to rent them a room. So people can't rent them out for 30 days or 60, so.
Correct.
Okay.
Not, if this article were to pass, that would be the case.
All right.
I think we should try it.
Yep.
You know what I mean, like, we can always change it. If people, if people are really seeing that the market is allowing them renters for three months, six months, that are related to a certain profession, they can come and ask us to change it.
All right.
The whole thing was that this is supposed to produce, not Airbnbs, but year-round housing. So if the purpose is year-round housing, we should say it has to be used for 12 months.
What if, like, I went to Woods Hole, and I say, I have to rent the house out for a year, and they give me agreement every three, every two months or three months, they'll have a new tenant come in. Is that considered a whole year?
I don't think so.
I think they only talk about one tenant for 12 months or more.
Okay. Because I know Woods Hole, so a lot of times I'm looking for.
I think on the back end of that argument.
Sometimes the Coast Guard does that, they, they rent a house, and they have their staff in there, I, I.
I've thought about this a lot, it's like, because I, if you wanted to increase the capacity of your home to have a bedroom and a bathroom, and, you know, you can, you can do that, and, you know, rent to visiting professors or nurses, but the purpose and intent of the section is to incentivize the year-round housing. So I struggle with it, but in the end, I just feel like there, there are other opportunities within the zoning bylaw to expand the capacity of your home for temporary use.
Also, we can, like, next year, if we see this, a big demand for this.
Let's say, right, let's say the building department is starting to get a lot of violation notices because of something we didn't mean to trigger, then we can just change it.
Yep. Now, what if, what if we did, or thought about, like, say if you're going to rent out your primary residence, you can do that one for a year, like, that's, and then you're, if you have a, you know, you're smaller, second.
You can live in either one, but you have to, one person or one big family.
Right, well, if you're going to rent out your main, your primary residence, right, that's what incentivizes families into it, as opposed to, like, your little cottage outside.
Yes.
Because of seasonal workers, right? So you can rent out your seasonal, your little cottage.
Seasonal, we don't have seasonal in this bylaw.
Right, so is there one that, I'm just thinking, like, that's, I feel like it's very restricted for homeowners.
You know, that's interesting, if you put a seasonal worker provision in there, we'd have to work on it for next time.
Yeah, I guess I would just remind you guys that this is your article, you submitted this article, and this is the executed warrant, so you can always vote to not recommend, or you can vote to recommend, and if you vote not to recommend, you could elaborate in the minutes what your recommendation would be for a potential motion to amend on the floor, but this is the article under consideration for the purpose of this public hearing.
Warrant article six. Yes, Lynn, you have to come up.
Lynn Barbie Surf Drive, I've been thinking about this a lot too. So if I have an accessory apartment, but I let a family member live there and they don't pay rent, there's no lease, they're not paying anything, they're just living there, is that, is that a violation? I mean, I'm, that's what I'm.
That's what Dale brought up.
Right, that's what I'm trying to say, because it, the, the idea of a lease means that somebody has got a contract to live there, and if it's a family member, and they're just going to live there until whatever, their house gets repaired or whatever, then that would be, they wouldn't come under this bylaw?
It would, so in that scenario, the select board added the language with assigned lease on file. So there's nothing about this article that would prevent you from having your parents or your uncle or your cousins live in the unit free of charge, but a literal compliance with the bylaw would require a lease on file.
You could put in there for $1 consideration in the lease.
So, and so I might, like, yeah, I dealt with this with Hack and stuff, I have to have a lease on file for my mom, she's not, she's not paying the rent.
I just think this might come up.
It will.
Yes, right.
It will.
The, the other thing is, the thing that Dennis was bringing up, we know that Mashpee Commons is renting to the Community Health Center, their upstairs dormitory thing. So there's one person who's the rent, there's one entity that's renting that space, there's going to be different people living in it. So I don't see why, if I have a company and I want to rent the ADU or the house for a year, but I have a couple of different people who want to, who are coming to work for me and they want to live there, if the lease is in my name, or my company's name, or my organization's name, or whatever, is that a violation? Because it doesn't say one person can only, one entity, the, I mean, again, I think, because I, I think that this may come up with other, with other things, so I think it'd be helpful to be clear with everybody that, yes, you can, you know, Hui could rent the house and put whoever they want to there, whose business is that, right? I mean, as long as the person who owns it says it's okay.
I wonder if that's called a sublet?
Yeah.
I mean, there's nothing in this bylaw that says you can't sublet.
Right, because I was just thinking.
It would be between you and the owner of the property, whether you can sublet or not.
Right, okay, so that the person who's coming for three months at Woods Hole has some agreement with their employer there about finances, but the lease is in the name of the, I mean, I just think it will come up, so.
Housing, right, every person is different, so there's so many different scenarios.
I know, I know.
I mean, I think the basis for this is to, to create year-round housing.
Right.
Because they're getting, the homeowner, the property owner is getting a benefit from our zoning.
Right, right.
Right, for year-round housing, not an Airbnb.
Right.
So you got to keep looking at those two against each other, how do you prevent them from becoming Airbnb's?
You know, I, I agree, I totally agree, I think, I think it's important. I also know that if you have a small 350 square feet, you're talking about one person probably living there, maybe a couple. I've lived in studio apartments, so it's, and I think that that's fine. My only other suggestion is that, and maybe it's too late.
It is too late.
That the, the housing production plan have a question about, would you, if financially feasible, want to have an ADU on your property? Or would you live in an ADU on somebody else's property? Because I don't think it says anything about ADUs in the housing production plan, and I think it would be, makes sense to, to ask, who wants to do this, right? I mean, we don't, we haven't had a lot of ADUs created, and some of that is construction issues and, you know, the finances and all that, but it seems to me we don't know how many people would really want to have an ADU if it was financially feasible. And that's a good question to try to get out there to people. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Warrant article six, is that still going forward?
So warrant article, 11, rather.
I'm sorry, 11.
Warrant article 11. The petitioner was unable, to my knowledge, to obtain all of the signatures that would have been required to withdraw the petition prior to the execution of the warrant, so it's, I've spoken with the petitioner on her intent, it's my understanding the intention is to indefinitely postpone on the town meeting floor, but you will still need to make a recommendation.
We still have to recommend?
You would, and just the, just for the board's knowledge, the, the purpose of the petition was to modify the section of the zoning bylaw that determines the ability for a property subject to a special permit to expand, to expand the, the use of the special permit area by essentially annexing end property to the special permit area. And the, the petition proposed to modify some of the language of 174 45, oh, that's the wrong one, of, that's the treaty by law, sorry.
174 24C.
174 20, thank you, C9G, 174 24C9G. And it, the way I read the petition was that it was, it assumed that the current bylaw did not require applicants seeking to modify their permits by annexing adjacent land area to not comport with the use and dimensional criteria of the current bylaw, which it does. The current bylaw does require that, but there's an exception in the current language of the bylaw that exempts certain uses, such as cluster subdivisions and multifamily, open, open space multifamily developments, like Willow Bend or Deer Crossing. And so it was my understanding that the purpose of the petition was to strike that exemption. So as long as the petition didn't propose to strike that exemption, the petition would substantially have no impact on the existing condition. So it would be my recommendation on the basis of the way the petition was currently drafted to not recommend passage of this article.
Okay, any comment on that article? No. All right, we can vote then, so we'll go back.
We have to close this.
I got to close, yeah. May I take a motion to close the public hearing? Thank you, Mary.
Second.
Aye.
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 Okay, so warrant article two, the floodplain bylaw. Do you recommend?
I, I make a motion that the planning board vote to recommend the passage of this article by town meeting.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Article, warrant article three.
Again, I make a motion that the planning board vote to recommend passage of this article by town meeting.
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Article four, I make a motion, again, I make a motion that the planning board vote to recommend town meeting pass this article.
Second.
Aye.
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 Article five?
Oh, I was an aye, sorry. Article five, again, I make a motion that the planning board vote to recommend town meeting pass this article.
Second.
Aye.
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 I do not.
So it's, it's three?
Three, one.
Three, one, so it passes.
You have a no or abstain?
Uh, no.
No, three, one. Warrant article 11.
And, sorry, Mary, and I would suggest again, for the purposes, if the board's intention is to not recommend this article. is to not recommend this article, to take the motion and the affirmative and then, and then vote accordingly.
I was going to make, I was going to make a, a motion that the, that the planning board vote to recommend this article being indefinitely postponed.
That works.
Does that work? Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Which article is this?
The last one.
This is the petition article.
Eleven?
Yeah.
Yeah. Aye.
Aye.
Why are you voting no on Article Five? Because I was kind of in that too.
Um, I just think that it could be.
It's better.
Like, flush, like, it could be flushed out to meet a more of a middle ground between year-round, which we do want, and seasonal, seasonal renting, shorter term, not, but something.
So you can make an art, you can make a motion on the floor to reduce that time, it would be less restrictive, right? And you can make a motion to, you amended to six months, three months, blah, 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 on the floor, because it's going to be less restrictive.
Okay, so.
So, so keep your vote the way it is, right?
Yep.
And, and maybe see how town meeting goes. If a lot of people get up and they're like, oh, it should be six months.
Yeah, but.
You can reduce that 12 months to six months, three months, do you know what I mean?
Yep.
From the town meeting floor, and I'm sure Evan would guide you through what kind of language you have to use to do that.
Okay.
It's now 7:30, almost.
Be prepared for everything.
Madam Chair, just, what was the vote on Article Eleven?
Article.
Indefinitely postponed?
Article Five.
Article Eleven.
Was.
The vote was taken, it.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
To, not, not recommend.
To recommend that it is indefinitely postponed.
Well, can't we say not recommend or recommend approval?
That was my motion.
It was second.
And it was seconded.
Okay.
Do you want discussion? Call for discussion.
On eleven, right?
No, I don't need discussion. Does anyone want discussion?
No.
On eleven?
Eleven, yeah.
Eleven.
So I vote yes.
To indefinitely postpone.
To recommend indefinite postponement.
Aye.
Okay, I vote yes as well.
Seven.
Oh, yes.
Okay, public.
Okay, it's 7:30. Public hearing for Southworth Properties, Mashpee Properties LLC. Mashpee Planning Board Public Hearing pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty-Eight, Chapter Eleven. Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March One, 2023, at 7:10 p.m. at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North to consider an application from Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC, property owner, to modify the Willabend Country Club Special Permit. The applicant proposes to construct a 14-unit, single-family cottage community immediately contiguous to the Willabend Golf Course at 275 Quinnequisset Avenue, map 69, block 32. Existing single-family dwelling is proposed for demolition. With these changes, the total unit count for the Willabend project would be increased to 287 if the board authorizes the annexation of 275 Quinnequisset into the Willabend Special Permit as allowed. 287 dwelling units is the maximum number of dwelling units authorized under the special permit. All units will be connected to and served by the existing privately-owned wastewater treatment plant, which serves the entire Willabend project. We received a letter from Attorney Jack McAnney, McEl, how do you pronounce his name?
McAlany.
McAlany, dated September 5th, 2023, addressed to Mr. Lehrer. Dear Mr. Lehrer, Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC, respectfully request that both of the public hearings relating to its special permit modifications currently scheduled for September 6, 2023, be continued to the October 18 meeting. Thank you for your attention to this matter. So with that said.
I make a motion to continue the public hearing for the both applicants to October.
Well, we got to do it one at a time, don't we? Yeah, one at a time, this particular one.
Okay, the, what's the?
275.
275 course, they have October 18th at 7:10.
Is that, do we have anything scheduled for that day?
Nothing on that.
No, okay.
On that date.
7:10, October 18.
October 18.
All right, so I won't read the letter again, but you understand.
I'd like discussion, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Do we know on the 18th if the project proponent is going to be ready to go forward?
I don't.
Do we know why they're requesting this continuance?
No. I mean, other than the fact that the Conservation Commission's review on 275 is, is incomplete, and it's been generally communicated to them that the board won't be in a position to further deliberate on the application until the completion of the Conservation.
Okay.
So that's the assumption I'm making.
Do you know that the Conservation Commission has put this matter on hold until we've decided?
Wow.
Yeah. So we have a, a, a negative feedback loop here going.
I would strongly recommend that we urge the Conservation Commission to go through their review, because you will not be in a position to do anything with this absent their.
Why would they put this on hold?
I do not know.
It's, it's in their, it's in their meeting. They said, they told the project proponent, go get your plan finalized by the planning board and come back to us. So the, the consultant that the Conservation Commission has secured to review the plans is not working on the plans, because they're waiting for in, for input from us.
That's a nightmare.
I mean, we were here, we said.
That's a nightmare.
Yeah.
I don't understand why the Conservation Commission would actually per, review the application in, in that order of operations.
Because.
That, that's, it's interesting.
That's important, that's what we were waiting for.
To make our finding was input from the Conservation Commission.
I think it's important we enumerate for the Conservation Commission that, absent you, and your approval on the project, it does not proceed.
Yeah.
It, it, it's, it ends with you. And as, you know, Mary asserted at former public hearings, you have to make a series of findings on that application, and there are findings that you need to make that the review of the mitigation options presented by the applicant would go a long way towards determining whether or not the application meets the criteria defined in the zoning bylaw. So I might urge the planning board to submit correspondence to the chairman of the Conservation Commission enumerating that.
Do we have to come here?
So I'm fine, I'm fine with seconding the motion, as long as we also authorize our chair and our town planner to kind of work out a schedule so that we are both, both commissions and both boards aren't continually, uh, continuing them, because they're waiting for input from the other board that's, can, keeps continuing it.
Send a letter to the chair.
Um, what I would ask the board to do is authorize, I'm, I'm happy to prepare a draft letter for your review and approval to send to the chairman of the Conservation Commission.
So moved.
So move, yeah. Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, so then I'll second Dennis's motion to continue this public hearing until October 18.
Eighteen at 7:10.
At 7:10.
Okay, the other, the other motion, the other hearing?
We have to take a, we have to take a vote on that. There was a first and a second.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, Evan, you caught on right away, okay.
My goodness. That was, that's interesting.
Second hearing, Mashpee Planning Board Public Hearing Notice pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter Forty-Eight, Section Eleven, and the town of Mashpee zoning bylaws, Section 174-24, foren C, closed print nine. The Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June 21, 2023, at 7:20 p.m. at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North to consider an application from Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC, property owner, to modify the Willabend Country Club Special Permit. This application requests that the existing condition in the November 1991 Special Permit Modification Decision affirming the limit of the total number of bedrooms within the Willabend project area to 853 be amended. Okay, may I have a motion? Any public comment?
Oh, no.
We're not, we're not talking details on this.
I make a motion to continue the public hearing.
October 18.
October 18th, that's 7:20?
Second.
We might need a little more time?
We can just continue it.
Yeah.
Seven, okay, 7:20.
Aye.
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 Aye. So moved. Okay, now.
New business.
We have public comment on anything else. Does anyone want to make public comment?
So maybe Drew knows what's going on.
Thank you again, and thank you again for this opportunity to address you. I find it very interesting, the workings of the sessions that I've been privileged to be at. And I just wanted to add a certain, I guess, overview of maybe principle. I think I handed out a few copies of, you might say, an essay that I put together. But the, the basic thing is, despite the fact that a lot of us might have differences or, we are all looking for and wanting the same thing, I think. And I, I put it down as, we're looking for a clean, safe, pristine environment, an equitable environment that allows everyone and everything to flourish and reach its maximal potential, living in peace and harmony. And one way to get there is really to listen to each other very carefully, empathetically and compassionately, look at, look at each other in the eye and try to figure out where we're coming from and how we can communicate and come to a common understanding to reach cert, these goals. The other thing I wanted to emphasize, and I don't think people realize, I mean, my background is science, as well as medicine and some finance. The world is going to be experiencing a very rapid, significant change in many areas, technology, finance, and medicine. Some things are going to revolutionize the way we live, the way we think, that are going to make our decisions that we make different, because it's going to be able to purify water and purify air in different ways that we never even thought about. Because I know that's one of the prime objectives of everybody in the community. So I just wanted to open everybody else to think about the fact that change is a good thing, because many times people fear change, but we ought to educate ourselves and accept change and try to use change for our betterment. And we have to educate ourselves more about what's happening scientifically, environmentally, to make the community work for us, every single person, make everybody reach their level of happiness and potential that they're capable of doing. That's basically it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I think the minute taker needs your name for the hook.
Yeah, Dr. Stephen Ross.
Thank you.
Well, Dr. Ross, oh, I'm not at that point yet, I'm coming up to it. New business, discussion and possible vote relative canceling the October 4, 2023 meeting.
Sure be.
You're not here?
I'm going to be out of the country from September 26 through October 7.
And Rob's not here.
So let me ask Evan, is there anything that you anticipate happening on the agenda of October 4?
There is nothing preventing you from canceling that meeting. I'm also on vacation the week prior, but I will be, I will be here that day, so if you opt to proceed, I will be present.
Okay, I'll leave it to the board, the board has two options.
But you currently have nothing scheduled for that date.
I make a motion.
Dennis already made the motion, I'll second that.
You may, say it again.
I make a motion to continue the October 4 public meeting.
Uh, it's continue the meeting, period.
Cancel the meeting.
Canceling the meeting.
Cancel and continue it to the next.
I'll, I'll second that cancellation.
Continue with the next.
All right, any discussion? No.
No.
Vote?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous, thank you.
I have, Evans, remember I came to you maybe two weeks ago about seeing, going around, seeing how much people actually make that live in Mashpee?
Yeah.
How many jobs that are actually in Mashpee? How many people work in those jobs that are in Mashpee, live in Mashpee?
Yep.
Because we talk about affordable housing, and I'm getting tired hearing about policemen, firemen, and teachers. They make good money.
Yeah.
They get benefits. I'm looking at younger people have one job, they may not have benefits or have to pay for it, but I, I'd like to know so we can see actually how we can address those problems and get housing for the people that really need it.
Yeah, I remember this discussion, and what I think Dennis was suggesting the town should consider doing is have some sort of economic, labor force analysis, economic analysis, that would describe the existing labor conditions in the town, availability of jobs, what types of jobs they are, and the rates of pay for those jobs. I, I think I told you, I thought it might be a logical action in the short term to include in the housing production plan.
Great idea.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, I think there's room in the housing production plan for that, and the, the consultants from, is it Barrett Planning Group? They said that that housing production plan has to be written to meet our needs in our town.
Oh, good.
Not the whole world.
Yeah.
So let's watch over that piece carefully with respect to the workers here.
Yeah.
So we'll put that as an action in the draft plan, and the planning board will be reviewing and hopefully approving that this year.
But I think that the, I think the HBP will address that a little bit. They look, won't they look at the summer labor?
Certainly, certainly the most recent, Bureau of Labor Statistics data and, and any census data, but, you know, I don't know how granular that gets.
Well, could we, could we pass Dennis's comments on to the consultants?
With certainty.
Yeah.
That's great.
Because they might be saying, oh, maybe Mashpee isn't interested in these figures. We've got them right here. Just pass it on that he, that Dennis would like to see them, and then it might not be that much work for them to include it.
We're talking about people like making $30,000 a year or less, or even less.
Yeah, you know, that, they have, they have wife and child who are working, they make like 80 together, I think, even find rent, you know, they have to live with their parents and.
Yeah.
Stuff, and that's hard on, you know.
No, I think it's important we look to the future, like what's, where the job's going to be in the future, because if, you know, if the future jobs are making, I don't know, just for example, like, like cleaning water, but we don't have any jobs that clean water here, so everyone's going to move to, so, like, young people who are going to school, they're going to move to, I don't know, Virginia, like, tech bubble someplace else, because we're not thinking about the future for our younger folks to stay here when they graduate or come back, right? It's not the case, I don't think, at present.
I want to keep the young people here.
Right.
I don't want to be turned into a nursing home.
Well, nursing home, yes, that we don't want.
Actually, you'll see more older people moving here and the younger people moving out, and we got to import people to work here. I'm off Cape, it don't make sense to me.
It's hard to live here.
Totally. Okay, well, speaking of clean water, the clean water is always on the agenda, and I'm just going to give you a little more about PFAS. I seem to be obsessed with PFAS.
Yeah.
The, the article that I read, I read a couple of very good articles, but one of them was attached to the Association for Preservation for Cape Cod, and it talks about many things, but it talks about, say, for example, the sources of PFAS in pesticides. That's what I want to talk about, pesticides and PFAS. It's really startling. PFAS is in pesticides for three main reasons. One, they put pesticides in these plastic containers, and they fluorinate the containers. I'm guessing it's to purify them or whatever, I have no idea, but the fluor, the fluoride or whatever portion of that chemical winds up in the pesticide, and remember, what are we calling, is polyfluoro, fluoroalkyl. And the longer it sits, the chemicals sit there, it gets worse and worse and worse, as long, as long as it's stored. That's one reason. The second reason is the molecular structure of PFAS, of a pesticide, some of them, it's just PFAS, that's what it is, which is unbelievable. These are, these pesticides are registered with the EPA. PFAS can also be an inert, inert component, and these inert components, they disperse, they help to disperse the pesticide, make it stay, stay on the plants or, you know, like sticky or whatever. And what, what happens with that is, this is pretty shocking to me, the EPA determines which inert ingredients you can have, but you don't, they do not, the owners of these companies do not have to put the, this on the label. It's a trade secret. It only loses its trade secret if the EPA finds out that it's harmful to humans or to the environment. to the environment, trade secret. And it's in Section ten of the EPA federal law, that this is a trade secret. In September twenty-twenty-two, they removed, the EPA removed twelve PFAS from a list of inert ingredients, and they say there are at least six or eight more that are existing. PFAS, as you know, can accumulate in fish and wildlife, and they, it's forever, persists in the environment. Here was a cute thing. An environmental toxicologist was researching in a greenhouse to see how much PFAS a plant took in, you know, a controlled plant, controlled plants, and they found PFAS in it, and they couldn't figure out why. And then they saw on the side in the greenhouse, there were ten insecticides that had been used and were stored over there, and they found PFOS in six of the ten chemicals ranging from four million to nineteen million parts per trillion. The EPA, June twenty-twenty-three, Special Advisory, Health Advisory, says PFAS in drinking water cannot be more than point zero-two parts per trillion, which is barely detected. Well, that's how dangerous this stuff is. And here was the kicker. This, this product that I'm going to tell you about is still in use in Massachusetts, a nonprofit, I'm not sure whether they were in Massachusetts, but this is from Massachusetts. They tested a jug of Anvil ten plus ten, which is an insecticide. Mash, Massachusetts has sprayed millions of acres over the last several decades with this stuff to kill mosquitoes. They found that this, this product contained multiple PFAS, you remember, there are many thousands of compounds, including two hundred fifty parts per trillion of PFOA, I don't know how you pronounce that, PFOA, which the EPA says the advisory limit is nearer point zero-zero-four parts per trillion, two hundred fifty parts per trillion found here. So here's one more thing to think about, and maybe I have some thoughts on how we could do better. Thank you. Okay, as you can see from this chart, and for, for the audience, you know, these, these things, what's, products that contain PFAS, eye makeup, popcorn bags, firefighting foams, paints and sealants, nail polish, dental floss, wow, waterproof clothing, shampoo, pesticides, photography, candy wrappers, et cetera. So PFAS is ubiquitous. So what these products, they wind up in the landfill, then they seep into the groundwater, and maybe they reach the surface waters and contaminate our drinking water. So the only thing I can think of that we can do better on this is we can help it by not using pesticides around our house, and of course, growing a clover lawn that does not need pesticides and it does not need fertilizers.
A moss, like my lawn's all moss.
That's good, too. So that's the end of anything more on PFAS, because, yes, sir, did you want to say something?
Now, I'll reintroduce myself, Dr. Steve Ross. It just so happens that I got a bunch of medical things on the internet periodically, and a bunch of things about PFAS just came up. Do you know that we can measure the PFAS, you have PFAS in your blood?
Yeah.
Yes, it's completely in everybody, babies and all.
Right, so it is a significant problem, and I'm sure there are ways of purifying it, as well as, I mean, I think you, you put down the list, I was looking it up, it also is in the cookware, you know, that nonstick cookware that we use?
Here, I'll give you this, if you want it.
Water-resistant fabrics, grease-resistant fabrics, because the fluorine in it makes things not stick, so they spray it on everything, the clothes, it's everywhere, it's in the lipsticks, it's every place. There is a hundred billion dollar lawsuit against two chemical companies who produce the thing.
DuPont is one?
I, I'm not sure, but they're the big ones, it could be, I don't want to name it because I, I not, you know, I read about it, but it didn't stick.
Yeah.
So there, there may be some money that's coming that you can get to, you know, mitigate the, the problem either through wastewater treatment and things like that, water purification treatment, filters, you know, for the water that comes out of your tap, and making sure, you know, that the bottled water that we drink doesn't have it.
Um, it is, the bottled water, in fact, if you look, is PFAS, I didn't copy this article, is PFAS in bottled water regulated? No, and it's in things like Perrier.
Right, and we have no idea what it's going to be doing to us.
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
I, I heard a thing that day about, like, you know, you spray it out of mosquitoes?
Yes.
And stuff, that's killing all the pollinators.
Correct.
I don't know if you noticed, this year, there wasn't that many butterflies and stuff, but we should have some regulations that homeowners should follow, like a commercial company, they regulate, but, you know, homeowners just spray it all over the place, and they don't care where it goes.
You know, it was interesting, so for your, your last Maytown meeting, you approved the solar overlay, or the solar expansion to the C one and C two and C three?
Speak up.
So you approved the, the most recent changes to this solar energy system bylaw, and you included a provision in the bylaw that was no insecticides or herbicides, chemical insecticides or herbicides, which the Attorney General, to my recollection, rejected that language because there's a state law that prevents you from restricting its use.
Yeah.
Seems to be some lobbying effort should be done as well.
And that goes with fertilizers as well.
I believe so.
From what I understand, state law, can't, you can't ban fertilizers.
Correct.
I don't know, when I was a little kid.
That was from their model bylaw.
Yeah, it's interesting, isn't it?
Yeah.
And spray from a skeet, and we used to go out there.
So that provision is.
And let it come out, so we wouldn't get stuck.
Everything else?
Nobody had said anything, I mean, it was, oh, get that line, you won't get.
It's like people, girls who use reflectors and you had skin cancer.
That explains.
They'll require a.
That's why I'm going to have to dial out.
Mechanical removal.
Okay.
Use cancer artificially prohibit the use of the herb.
Doctor, I want to give you something.
Okay. All right, where are we on the agenda?
Okay.
Okay, so we'll move on.
Oh, Board Engineer and Reports, did we have anything?
Don't have any Board Engineer report.
No, but I did want to point the, your attention to a, a piece of correspondence received from resident of Blue Castle Drive, Tom McNabb.
Yes, we want to cover that.
It's listed under correspondence, but I think it's worth discussion. I, I have reached out to, to Ed on this subject because it pertains to the portion of Blue Castle Drive between Great Neck Road South and the subdivision road that's improved, and specifically the condition contained in that permit requiring maintenance on an annual basis, beginning with the developer to be transferred to the Aquay Highlands Homeowners Association. And to be brief on what the letter is requesting the board, the, the author of the letter is really looking for the board to determine whether or not that condition is, has been satisfied. I reached, where we've been standing, because I believe I've stated on the record before, it's the opinion of the Planning Department, that that particular condition hasn't been met annually as required. And so we've had Ed and Mr. Moore communicating on how we can achieve compliance with that requirement prior to any transfer of the, of those obligations to a homeowners association. I, I haven't heard from Ed in that regard, but I stand by what I said many months ago, I don't believe the, that particular condition has been satisfied. So it would be my suggestion and recommendation, if, if, if you review the letter and agree, that we find that the, that particular condition has not been met, and that the board's expectation will be to have the Board Engineer determine the, any required conditions to ensure that the condition of the road meets the detail, the detail on the subdivision approval before transferring any obligations of maintenance over to the Aquay Highlands Homeowners Association.
I, I, it says in the, in the permit here, regrade the road. Well, when you look up what regrade means, I looked it up, use a motor grader to restore the driving surface and drainage attributes to the road, remove potholes and other irregularities by cutting the surface of the road or filling, filling them with natural, with material, move back and forth by the grader. So this is not a permanent fix that he, he's required to do.
No, but.
No, I mean, I think.
It's supposed to be done annually, and he's not done it.
Correct.
Right.
That's, that's my position.
He should leave it done before he turns it over, and then let them.
Yeah, his obligation is not infinite, I mean, it does, the permit asks that it be transferred over, it's just, they should not be required to assume that maintenance obligation if it hasn't been met in the past two, three, four years. That's my opinion.
Yeah.
Well, the one argument I think that this gentleman was making here in this letter is they were supposed to build the sidewalk, he was, Moran was supposed to build, Mr. Moran was supposed to build the sidewalk, and they would be willing to forego it, and they would like something better done to the road than just regrade.
I did reply to Mr. McNabb when he submitted this letter because I, I reminded him that the board can't take any action or contemplate a modification of the conditions of the permit absent of an application to modify the permit, which he understands. He.
So the sidewalk can't be removed, the requirement for the sidewalk can't be removed without an application and a public hearing.
Right, so I'm not necessarily suggesting the board contemplate any modification of the sidewalk at this time. I just think it would certainly, Mr. McNabb's been on this issue for many months, the board has discussed it, he is asking for the board to, to take a definitive vote as to its condition and offer recommendations. You don't have to do this tonight, but I, I just wanted to reiterate my opinion that I don't believe that condition's been met, and we should lay out a series of actions you're expecting to ensure the condition gets met prior to the transfer of that obligation.
So, all right, so we have a Board Engineer, right?
Yes.
Who, who, let's see if the Board Engineer is comfortable with that determination that the requirements have not been met.
Yes, I think.
Because he's a professional engineer, and he's got a stamp.
I agree.
And, and I think we should get a report from the engineer in a draft letter.
I agree.
About what we would vote on and what action steps were required.
That sounds prudent.
And where, where is Ed right now?
I do not know.
Okay, well, you have, you have, you know how to contact him.
I sure do.
Yeah, I know, I know, I just.
So I am awaiting a reply on this, I suggested something to say.
I think we should take a vote to assign that work to the, to the Board Engineer and the Town Planner. I, I so moved that we.
Okay, do we need a motion?
Yeah, to order the, the engineer to do this. I would make that motion to, to, to send that work assignment to the engineer and the Town Planner.
Second.
Any discussion?
When?
At what point, I mean, when, when would he report back to us?
I'm going to ask Ed to deliver. Well, you, we'll have a report sooner, but you're not, we're not meeting on October fourth, so we'll have an answer, I suppose, in public session on October eighteen.
And just a little bit of discussion, who's going to pay that bill?
Um, well, this would come out of, the, the town would pay that bill.
Provided the Town Manager approves that expense. See, there's no applicant to pay the bill.
I do have a budget for it.
Oh.
It's been increased.
You do?
So as long as you authorize me to pay it out of your account, it's fine.
Okay, so we don't have to go to the Town Manager?
I'm not concerned about being able to pay that bill.
Provided the, the, the Planning Board slash Planning Department budget can cover the expense.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You don't want to send an engineer out without a budget.
We've got to put this to bed, I mean, this is getting really old.
I will note, in my office right now, is a traffic radar sign to be handed over to the D P W and the police department.
You didn't bring it out here.
Let me ask you a question.
Bring it out, I said to take a picture of it.
My knowledge, Tom is saying in this letter here that only fifty percent of the development is built out, is that right?
No, I don't believe that's accurate.
Isn't it usual that you don't turn it over to the homeowners association until it's built out?
Well, I mean, I think the logic is that you're assigning a maintenance responsibility on a defined portion of road where the cost sharing is intended to be dispersed over fourteen homes or whatever it is, and I think Mr. McNabb and his neighbors would assert that there are only six homeowners currently paying into the association, if they're paying yet, and we do not have the revenues yet.
Yeah.
To comply with the regulations, so it should be incumbent upon the developer to ensure that the, the development is at capacity so that the maintenance obligations of the permit can be met. I think that would be his argument.
You know, the other thing I, I, he highlighted something about occupancy permits are not supposed to be issued until a certain thing happens.
Where was that, Mary, in this art, in this letter?
Yep, under Public Safety Mitigation nine, all of said work shall be completed prior to the issuance of any occupancy permit. So what did that refer to?
Are you looking under Public Safety mitigation?
Yeah, because all of the things that we're looking for are kind of like above that statement.
Well, if you remember, prior to asking for the tripartite agreement to secure the completion of the road, Charlie Rowley and Jacques met on site, and Jacques met the terms of this condition once with approval by Charlie. So then entered a tripartite agreement, released from the covenant, and see if the house could be built and issued. So that was completed prior to, just the annual maintenance hasn't occurred.
I see, okay, so we're not, we're not.
I'm not necessarily concerned about that particular issue.
And let me ask you one other question. Tom is saying, this was, this about the agreement, what, what he's supposed to do on an annual basis, what Mr. Moran is supposed to do on that road on an annual basis, this was never disclosed to homeowners and not in any provided documentation. Wouldn't this normally be provided in documentation at a closing?
Well, I think, I think it is unkind of a developer to not make a potential buyer aware of any obligations that they may have pursuant to a special permit, but I know that our, our legal counsel would suggest that, and this hasn't been an opinion I've sought, I'm just kind of inferring from other opinions received, that that permit that you approved or that a former board approved is on record at the registry of deeds and due diligence on the buyer. So I think that's very unfortunate, but I don't think there's necessarily anything enforceable for you to consider.
Yeah.
Based on that allegation.
That wouldn't involve us.
No.
No, I know.
Because, because it's public knowledge, I mean, if.
I'd beware, you know.
Caveat emptor.
Yeah.
Yep. All right, does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, wait, can we, yes. Can this matter be in a formal agenda item on our next meeting?
All right.
No problem with me.
Okay.
And then, now I, I.
Second.
No, I bow to you.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you and good night.